All right, we'll get that recording going and we're ready to rumble. All right.
Lincoln is online with us.
Very good, we'll hear him on the roll call and test that out. All right, welcome everybody. My name is Mayor Carolyn Lundberg and I will be presiding this evening over our proceedings for this Linden City Council held at 5:15 PM, Monday, May 5th, 2025. Did you all catch it's square root day? Five twenty-five, five-five twenty-five. Anyway, come on Principal Stewart, you should have caught that.
I was a math teacher too.
Anyway, welcome here to our proceedings if you are here in person or online. We are first going to begin with an invocation offered by Councilmember Steve Stewart, followed by a pledge of allegiance led by our own Parks and Rec Superintendent Alan Walker.
Our Father, who art in heaven, we are so grateful for this day, for the bounteous water that we've received and for this place that we live. We're so grateful for our many blessings and we're grateful for this time that we have here to serve and to be with citizens of Linden, this great place that we live and work in. Grateful for all that we have here, grateful for our first responders and ask you to bless them in all their efforts. We ask you to bless those who lead and serve in this community, that they will be blessed in what they do. We pray for wisdom and knowledge and understanding as we move forward in these proceedings. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Much. All right, we will now begin with our roll call and we'll start here in person. We'll get our councilmembers that are in person and then take Councilmember Jacobs online at the end.
Cole Hooley, present.
Van Broderick, present.
Lynn Lundberg, present.
Steve Stewart, present.
Jake Hoyt, present.
Lincoln Jacobs, present as long as you can hear me.
We sure can, very good. We're, everyone's here. Complete attendance. So thank you so much Lincoln for buzzing in. All right, we are now on item number two of the agenda. These are at the entrance to the door if you'd like to follow along on our agenda for this evening. We don't have any presentations today and so we'll move on to item number three. This is our open session for public comment. And the purpose of this is if someone would like to address the council for an item that is not listed on tonight's agenda, this is your opportunity to come forward and state your name and present something. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, which is our council reports. And whomever would like to kick that off, please take it away.
Yeah, Mayor, we met this past week as a youth council leadership to interview eighteen of our new youth council members. They are probably one of the greatest groups of youth that I've had the pleasure to work with. They come from all different walks of life, their experiences, the schools they attend, everything about them, but they are going to be a great group. We're excited about this opportunity over the course of the next year. And they will be coming to our next meeting in two weeks on May nineteenth where we'll introduce them all to the council. So very much looking forward to that.
Thank you. And our youth council will go help plant flowers, which is a tradition we've started over at the cemetery and getting that squared away for our Memorial Day program coming up. So thumbs up from Juan, we're good. All right, go ahead Jake.
Got an update from Chief, always appreciate those. Reminder to this group of the banquet on the fourteenth, hope you have that on your calendars for you and your spouse. And a lot of great things going on, a lot of great and not great things and the police always protect us from that and I'm always surprised and shocked sometimes when I receive these updates, appreciate all they do. Just a reminder on the Chamber of Commerce, Pleasant Grove Linden Chamber of Commerce Golf Tournament as well that's coming up. So that's all I had.
Not great things, I think you meant ignorance is bliss.
Yes, yes, I appreciate you keeping us, keeping us safe and sometimes ignorance is bliss. The amount of things you see on that list, we appreciate all you guys do.
Okay, so the tree board had a really successful Arbor Day celebration, very fun, great turnout, lots of giveaways, it was lovely. And everyone else, the communities that care, the Historical Commission are doing great work. And the school district, we had another meeting recently and have another one in just a few weeks where we're just tightening up next potential steps, making sure that we're just doing everything to ensure that the board has what they need, have had conversations with the school district and what role they'll be playing. The Alpine School District, the role that they'll be playing to support our new boards, just to make sure that everyone immediately they start to have everything that they need and those are, conversations are going well.
Very good, thank you.
All right, upcoming May fourteenth, we have our engineering meeting, which we'll plan on attending and then appreciate some updates from Juan. The two thousand West Road reconstruction and utility work is ongoing.
I just went out there today, it's still closed.
Oh yeah, but it's coming along well. It was a fun project to have walked through to see all of the intricate work that's being done. Secondary water is on and running and Juan gave me the update that we got it ten days earlier than we normally would have because we were able to use the Provo River Aqueduct. And to be able to have some control of that on our, as a city, rather than waiting for it to come down through the canals. So hopefully that's very much appreciated by the citizens and then on a day we're getting rain, I always appreciate that. An update on well number five is it's being developed using surge pumping method, currently pumping at fifteen hundred gallons a minute. And a little bit later, the goal is to test it to see what it'll do at four thousand gallons a minute. So pretty excited about that well, that's the one that's located in the corner of the cemetery.
Yeah.
You hear it running?
Yeah, it has a little buzz.
Not too loud?
It's manageable.
It's manageable, okay.
It's going.
All right.
Thank you so much. Very good. Really quickly on the school district, Cole mentioned a number of individuals who are anticipating, who are actually pre-campaigning in anticipation of their file, of the filing opportunity in June, have reached out and asked if Linden City would host a meet the candidates night for school district specific individuals. You know, maybe, or allow them to have something in our community centers since our district is likely going to be the whole of Linden and then just a little piece of PG. So something to think about if we want to do that. I know typically we haven't had to run a primary in the past several cycles, so we've usually done our meet the candidates as far as the elected officials in this body until closer to the election in November. Anyway, so they've reached out about that, there's likely to be a primary for certain on the school district.
Yeah, for sure.
Positions, so something to think about.
Interesting thought there. As you may know Shane Farnworth is stepping down as superintendent. And going to go work for BYU.
Yeah, movement is afoot, right?
Is there a date or anything that you're thinking of?
September first, I thought I read.
Oh, sorry, for the.
Oh, for to host. A number of the individuals indicated they would like it to be soon, as soon as we would, you know, wish. And I think we should wait probably till filing to see who's officially filed versus just those who are verbally giving indications. First week of June.
June. Week, is there a specific date?
June one through six, I think. Second through the sixth, two, three, four, five, yes. So perhaps close to that end of the filing. And who knows, maybe we'll have a primary among us all here too. We never know. And then the Utah Lake Authority, as you all know, I serve as vice chair and they just kicked off last week a big huge campaign. Utah Lake, our lake and reclaiming it as our lake and the gem that it can be and the cleanup efforts that have been tremendous. And you'll start seeing some, probably some advertisements, slightly cheesy, like you'll recognize some people from Studio C. Those, anyway, the Utah Lake also, we had a big cleanup day last Saturday in conjunction and we had, gosh, at least a hundred and twenty people showed up, it was amazing. Planted three thousand native plants along the Linden shoreline. So already ULA has gone out and cleared out some of the invasive fragmites and then we replace it with native plant species. And a huge trash cleanup and so it was really tremendous, a lot of people came out. So grateful for all that work that's happening. And then I think that's all I have for now. And seeing no other council reports, we'll move to item number five. Oh, sorry, Lincoln, my apologies. Lincoln, do you have anything you'd like to report?
I understand he is watching grandkids and so he's wearing headphones.
So my challenge is, I can't unmute it unless I'm in front of the computer. So when I'm going to settle earth shattering screams, I have to run back to the computer to unmute it. Our pool, as you can imagine, is hiring like crazy. They had one orientation, another one coming up in a bit. Lots of activity there, we have an agenda item later on relative to some pool expenses. We did not meet with our planning commission last week, we didn't have the items for the agenda. North Point South Waste is going to do a presentation for us in the city council, next city council. So you guys can look forward to the excitement that our trash handling goes through in the next city council.
Wonderful.
Thanks for the smile Van.
If we all could be as passionate about garbage as Lincoln. He's trying to, he's trying to sell it, he's working hard, I like that. Okay, and we'll now move to our, is that all then for you Lincoln?
Yes, that's it.
All right, item number five, our administrators' report.
The only thing that I had on here, just to give you a heads up, other than what's listed, just those couple of items, Keeneland Park, I just wanted to give you a heads up FYI, that's this little park area right at the bottom of one forty north. Juan, when do we expect that excavation to start?
Early Wednesday, we have to push it up for, ahead from another project I had. But we'll have equipment available to just deepen the pond, we're going to keep the embankments at the top the same. We're just going to go about five feet deeper to help mitigate flooding that happens with that spillway. And then phase two will be to create a channel that will route the water.
Kind of come down here.
Spills over, then we'll bring it down that cul-de-sac immediately to the.
Much needed for the big events.
Just an FYI, this is all on the city's property, but if you get questions from neighbors.
There's no play equipment there, it's just a catch basin.
It's just grass, there's no trees or anything.
Have we been informing those residents that have reached out to us and had some plumbing, flooding?
Yes, I've been in contact with the Endicots, which are the ones that are just to the west of the trail. And I spoke with.
Sorry.
Oumbadats, Kings, Oumbadats are to the east of the Endicots, Kings are the next house over.
East of the Endicots. Those are the only two that I have spoken with.
And then Van mentioned well number five and there's a, if you happen to drive by, there's a pipe that's been placed above ground. And so it's running along the shoulder, so we have some cones around that. So where the well is being tested, the pipe's actually discharging into some storm drain manholes that can accommodate those larger flows, so. That's all I have, thanks.
All right, thank you so very much. Council, we're now on to item number six. This is the approval of the minutes from our meeting dated April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. If you've had a chance to look at those minutes and determine if there's any adjustments or changes needed.
I have, any adjustments gentlemen?
I do not have any adjustments.
Okay, with that said, I will motion to approve the city council minutes of April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five as presented.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Thank you very much. All right, we're now on to the consent agenda, item number seven. These are items that do not require public comment or discussion. They are essentially housekeeping type items within the city. So we'll turn this over to Mr. Cowie to present.
Yeah, the state requires annually that the city council has to recognize that you've seen and received this municipal wastewater planning program report. And essentially what's been attached to this resolution is the report that's basically a checklist that we go through with the Public Works Department, completes that and fills it out. And this is just your acknowledgement that you've seen it and are okay with the answers and responses on that. So this has been, I would say, five, probably four or five years at least that we've done this, maybe?
It's probably about twelve years in the program.
Okay.
It's five years, five years already.
Okay. So no action other than just approval of this resolution twenty-five dash oh nine dash R.
If you're ready, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I was, sorry, because I see there wasn't anything about a mechanical plant and a lagoon discharge, so I guess we don't have those. We don't have those, yeah, so we contract with Orem City for those. That's all.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, we'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, that moves us on now to item number eight, which is also a review and action item regarding a property purchase here on Lakeview Road. So we'll first have staff kind of present some information and we'll potentially invite the property owners forward for any particular discussion or questions in that.
Thanks Mayor, yeah, we appreciate the Thornton family being here tonight. What's being decided upon this evening is an action item to consider purchasing this approximately six point one-two acres that's just west of State Street. The city has identified a few different reasons for purchasing this land. One would be for connection of the future four hundred north and four hundred west road right-of-way. The others being, we've looked at this general area as a location for a stormwater detention basin that we're estimating we need about two and a half acres to contain and manage some stormwater when we have big rain events. Also, we've identified this general area, this general neighborhood for a future park and then also for a potential future well site. So I'll run through some of those items as we look at this. The current zoning on the property, it's split zoned technically. Years ago, when the city created its commercial zone along State Street, they literally just went five hundred feet on either side of the road and drew a line down through the parcels. And so they didn't follow the property lines. And so some of those older parcels that haven't had zoning amended, it still shows a split zone. And the Thorntons' property is one in that it shows that split zoning. The way our ordinance reads is whatever zone is the most restrictive, so the residential would be the one that applies to the full property. However, when we, when we got the appraisal, the appraiser felt that the value of the land being that that eastern portion of the property is commercial and that somebody could reasonably request that at least that eastern portion be zoned commercial in the future. So the value of the land was split between the residential rate and the commercial rate. On the appraisal that we completed, it came back at a three point four million for this six point two, or six point one-two acres. A little history on the roadway, this map might be getting familiar. This is our nineteen sixty-eight street master plan. And just as an FYI, this connection between four hundred north and fourth west, I may have said fourth east earlier, sorry, so this is fourth west and fourth north, has been on our city's master plan since this nineteen sixty-eight plan was adopted. In more recent years, it's continued forward on all of our street master plans. Our most recent adoption of the plan was July of twenty twenty-three. There's been discussion of some sort of connection that may need to occur to the north to connect Gilman there. And we're in communication with UDOT, that was a requirement that they had suggested. This roadway may need to close Gilman and turn it more into a driveway because it's so close to the traffic signal intersection there on State Street. And therefore this could be a new route to the north that connects there, but there's some wiggle room there. So we're not positive that that's still a requirement to have that connection onto Gilman. And so we'll continue to talk with UDOT engineers as we move forward on that. But with some additional history on this, in two thousand eight to nine, Linden City coordinated with the Fellowship Bible Church, and this is an older air photo before their new building was constructed. This is the parcel that we're looking at and some options there that were shown conceptually on where the road may go. Fellowship Bible Church was looking to build an expansion and as they came in and talked and met with the city, the city said, hey, there's this roadway that we want to put through here. Some, and I will be honest, I don't know the history on how their church building ended up in that future road right-of-way. I don't recall why that occurred, that predates me. But when they looked to apply and add an addition onto the church, this came up. And so the city began negotiating and said, and eventually worked out a deal with the Fellowship Bible Church where we paid and bought that blue highlighted parcel. It's about eighteen thousand three hundred square feet. We paid them for the right-of-way and they were enabled then to build that newer church with some of those funds. We have an agreement with the Fellowship Bible Church then that if we are to install the roadway, we have to give them twelve months, a year notice. And they have the option to take the building down and have salvage rights on the building if they choose to do that, so. So just as an FYI, and there was a subdivision plat the city paid for and so the property underneath the building has been deeded to the city, so the city owns that land underneath the building outright. And in fact, we insure the building since it's on our property, so. Just some background on the city park, we had initially identified the, it used to be the Colomore property. It's now more recently the Cook property to the west of this site as a potential park location. In this Parks and Trails master plan that was adopted in twenty twenty, we identified the need for a regional, sorry, not regional, a citywide, the right word's not, community park, thank you. Which is larger in acreage than what we would classify as a neighborhood park. And so we had identified that Cook property, but had indications even then that that may or may not be feasible. And so when the Thornton land came up, this is a viable alternative that still meets the intent and purpose of picking up property to have a community park there. Potential amenities that were listed in the city Parks and Trails master plan included parking, a couple pavilions, a playground, water fountains, restroom, a walking path, science benches, potentially a paved pump track and trees in there, so. Again, we don't have a master plan on that specific park layout, but have identified that general neighborhood area as one that would benefit from a community park. Also included in your staff report, as we started looking at the costs of the roadway connection between State Street and Lakeview Road, our engineers recommended that we might pursue what they called a pioneer road, which would just be a two lane of asphalt and no curb gutter sidewalk shoulders. And so just getting that travel lane in there to help facilitate movement of vehicles. What we had been presented with from Utah Department of Transportation, they have, actually, if I jump back to, let me go to an air photo. UDOT approached the city a couple of years ago and indicated that a traffic signal was warranted at the two hundred north intersection, two hundred north State Street. This, this has come to the city a number of times, we've had some discussions there about options on a traffic signal or a median that would be put in, that would restrict left-hand turn lanes out of, out of the city sides of those intersection roads. With, with UDOT's conversation that we've had with them over the last several months, at some point, this connection of the roadway came up and, and they felt that the majority of traffic currently using this route on two hundred north would likely continue on this future roadway and go through the signalized intersection of four hundred north instead of this. And so pushing the dollars that UDOT would have invested in a traffic signal to this corridor became a topic of discussion. They verbally committed to us in numerous meetings that approximately one million dollars could be transferred from the state to the city to go towards road construction. They've more recently indicated that that would not be able to be used for right-of-way acquisition, so it wouldn't be buying the property, they want to make sure it's put towards the construction of the roadway because of the safety issues that they now are, basically have been made aware of after they've done their warrant studies on the two hundred north signal. And so if the city were to purchase the Thornton property and move forward with a roadway to try to secure those UDOT funds that would help build the road, it sounds like they're probably within a couple of years is when they would expect that road to go in. The decision you're making tonight is whether or not we're buying the property. It's not whether or not we're putting in the roadway or when we're putting in the roadway, so just to clarify that. By buying the land that does not lock you into building the roadway at this point in time or in the future. But just wanted to make sure that that's clear. Just as a reminder and for the public, we haven't had, a lot of our discussions have been in closed sessions in the past, so I don't know that some of this has been brought up forward to the public. UDOT has presented on two hundred north, this is their, in their warrant study, they found that the left-hand turn movements had created more severe traffic accidents. It wasn't necessarily the number of accidents that met their criteria to put in a signalized intersection, it was the severity of the accidents. And so they were bad enough that they said, hey, we got to either put in a median here or the traffic signal. And so just as an FYI, this was the option for the median, it would restrict the left-hand turn movements. And the cost on that, UDOT would actually pay for that entire cost of the traffic median, they estimated about six hundred and twenty-five thousand. The other alternative that the city at the time when we discussed this, this was more preferred, was to put in a full movement signalized intersection at two hundred north. And again, UDOT's desire is, hey, let's move that money from this signal to the road construction so that we can shift some traffic over to this other location instead of here. The costs on the traffic signal are more and so they had asked, since this benefits those side roads that the cities operate, they would pay a portion of this, the city's portion on that traffic signal would be a hundred and ninety thousand was the estimate at that time. So that's if we moved forward with a traffic signal at two hundred north. Some new additional information that we just received this afternoon from Mountain Land Association of Governments, I think this was helpful to share with you. And keeping in mind that this was, what they provided to us is their traffic model, that they look at all of the regional traffic flows from different areas in. at all of the regional traffic flows from different areas in, in the county. They modeled this connection and looked at potential traffic changes and shifts. And I just want to show you one of the maps from that. It does show a significant increase on traffic that, that could occur when this roadway goes in on fourth west. Essentially, the average daily traffic that could occur is this A A D T. Average annual daily traffic would be about eighty-two hundred vehicles, and this was in the year twenty twenty-eight. So that's assuming the roadway's connections built fairly quick. The other thing to look at on this map is this connection. They, they indicated these red and green lines don't always follow the exact route of the road, but this was the intent of a connection between Lakeview and State Street. That if this connection were made on, through the Thornton property, this would divert about four thousand vehicles a day from that intersection. So just an FYI, and they said, take these numbers with a grain of salt. This isn't a traffic.
They hadn't vetted the numbers.
This was, they plugged in the information in, into their system and their model.
Rough and dirty, they said.
Yeah, rough and dirty.
They would have to vet and do an actual traffic study to verify.
Yeah. So again, just, just information, more information on, on this topic that I just wanted to make sure you knew about.
Those are daily numbers, right?
These are daily, daily numbers.
So right now it's rough, well, twenty twenty-eight, roughly four thousand two hundred. The difference would be thirty-eight hundred more.
In twenty twenty-eight. So they said.
This change.
And they said the modeling showed it was local traffic. It wasn't from other communities.
Majority of this was local. And so.
They did or didn't?
Did. So they felt like this was people locally trying to access.
I fifteen, right? That's my thought.
State Street.
Both.
Oh, coming up it.
So, yeah, they said the majority of, of this northbound traffic was making a left onto State Street. And so. And again, take, take these numbers with a grain of salt. They said this was a quick and dirty on their model.
You pay a membership fee to MAG?
To, sorry, say that again.
We pay a membership fee to MAG?
We do.
Okay.
So we pay.
This is helpful. I'm, I'm, I appreciate it.
So this, the difference between this and, and for instance, the study that we did on twelve hundred east, on twelve hundred east, they actually put out the, the little
Counters.
Counters that are the, the tubes across the roadway, and they measured volumes of traffic. And so this did not do that.
This is more like AI modeling.
Yes. So this is, again, this is.
Nice to even have a baseline. It's helpful.
Yeah.
Hey, Adam?
Yes.
Can you hear me okay, Adam?
Yes.
As, as I'm looking at this traffic, I see this red road that goes straight through, but we don't have a road that's planned or goes straight through there.
There used to be.
Right? The road that we're looking at putting in is green, and this red one would have to dogleg around through that commercial zone.
Right. They, they said in their model, some of these streets don't, or some of these lines don't line up exactly with how the actual road is configured. And so instead of doing that zigzag, how the road currently runs, they said this was intended to, to be that connection between four hundred west and State Street.
Very good. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So just as an FYI, in, in general, if the road connection did occur, you might expect the traffic to dip almost double. So. Let's see. So we have talked about funding for this. I wanted to run through that here in this public session. Purposes, we reviewed, this would complete that four hundred north, four hundred west traffic signal. It would increase traffic safety by diverting those left-hand or, or right-hand movements at the two hundred north intersection more to the signalized intersection. It's intended that that would improve traffic safety. Would it give another option or alternative for east-west traffic to get across State Street through a signalized intersection? The only alternatives right now are at our north and south borders, either the seven hundred north signal or the two hundred south traffic signal. And then it defers the installation and/or replaces that need for the signal at two hundred north State Street. If, if the city doesn't move forward with purchase of the property and/or installation of the roadway here, UDOT, again, they felt obligated that they haven't known traffic safety issue. They, if we say we don't want a traffic signal there, they will install the median. And so which would prohibit left-hand turns for vehicles through that area. So the other alternatives for people to make a left-hand turn onto State from the west side of town is going to be up by Walmart. So people would have to go up through the Pheasant Brook neighborhood or one forty north, just to the south there. And south of our Center Street intersection. Everybody visualize where we're at on those two? Some other things as we've mentioned, we've got as park area plans proposed in this general area on the Park Master Plan. This would secure property that we can use for a future stormwater detention basin as a dual use in that park area. And then secures property that's been identified that this, this could be a future culinary well site. That's, that's potentially decades in the future, but as the water engineers that we've hired previously for this well number five had indicated, this general area of town may be suitable for a good producing well. So because of those various sources or various issues of why we'd be potentially looking at the property purchase, we're able to utilize a, a mix of funding. What we've currently identified is a million dollars from our road fund that could be, that is available in our fund balance. One point three seven five million in park impact fees that could go towards the purchase of property, five hundred thousand in our park tax balance, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's in our State Street RDA. It's a remaining fund balance. The RDA along the State Street corridor is expired, and they had a twenty-year life, and we have this money that's been left over that we need to use. And then two hundred thousand from our stormwater fund balance totaling the three point four million. Timing on this, we talked about with the Realtor that's, that's representing the Thorntons. We've talked. There's this potential for the UDOT to potentially reimburse the city or put that million dollars towards the future road construction. Let me rephrase that. It's not a reimbursement. They would have to go to the Transportation Commission. It's a state board essentially that represents big transportation funding and makes decisions similar to you as a city council. And they meet, it sounds like that's every other month is what I understood. And so they would have to go to this board and, and get this approved. They felt confident that, that that would likely happen if, if we were to pick up the property and commit to a reasonable timeframe. They haven't set a specific date, but they, they are looking, hey, within a couple of years-ish. And that they would want at least that pioneering road to go through. So Mike Florence just indicated that they would like to take this to their meeting in June with the Transportation Commission and that they would need a letter from the city this week to try to get on to that agenda. So. Questions?
Quick question on the difference between the Pioneer and the full.
Yeah.
Could we, am I, for about another two hundred and twenty-seven from the thousand, and that's a big number, I know. Would that not get us the full side road with curb and gutter? Because I'm curious from a stormwater function, and we use curb and gutter to control that a lot. Am I missing something there that?
So ask me your question.
For about another two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, you could get the full road.
Oh.
With the curb and gutter.
I see what you're saying.
But you don't have the culinary well. You don't have the park. You don't have the storm drain. I'm just wondering if I'm seeing that correctly, if I'm missing something. Looking at that road improvements line.
So council, maybe I thought it might be helpful to share since I sit on the MAG executive council.
Sorry, mayor, just really quick to answer Vance's question. So it's, I think it would be this difference then of these two numbers that are highlighted.
That's what it's looking like to me, which would make sense. And I don't know if one has a feel with all of our.
If we do the full road to, to complete curb gutter sidewalk, we need to trigger the, the utilities under the road. Because if, if we, if we don't, then we're going to be ripping out.
Good road.
Well, he, he's got the utilities planned on, on the Pioneer Road option.
What the utilities are?
Yeah. So under, so this is the Pioneer Road column. So he's got culinary and pressure irrigation sewer and storm drain. So it looks like all of the mains he's planned for as part of that.
Feels a little more in reach than that big number that of course is well and park and storm drain and.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Yeah. And under the, I mean, some of those other things, the park improvements, the, the storm drain, I think is more of a priority, but there's, there's options to do a temporary type of setup on that too. So.
Thank you for such a great presentation, Adam. And it looks like you have a question, but I have some information to give the council.
Do you want to give yours first?
If it's, it's regarding funding source. So.
I have a different question.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just real quick on, I know there were different other options slash properties that you were looking at for the detention pond, for the park and all of that. Does this property fit what is needed fully?
For the detention basin?
Yeah, for the park space, the detention pond.
Detention basin, it works for park.
Sure. You bet it does.
Okay.
All right.
Before you hit funding, water shares are included. What irrigation company? How many shares? These hollow?
I don't know. Is it hollow water?
Okay. And how many shares?
It was all turned in for not only that piece, but for the other piece. The shop piece was turned in.
We can verify that, right?
Has already been turned in in years past?
It has.
Is there new water shares coming in this then? As with the presentation note there?
Mike's going to verify and see if he can find and make sure that we have the enough shares that were turned in for the full six acres there. But.
I think, Gary, you already, how pressure irrigation, that's how you water it, that field, right? So it's already, that's why it's probably turned in there.
Okay.
So no new shares would be anticipated?
Not right now unless there's, it wasn't enough turned in to cover the property, but we'll verify that. So.
All right. All great questions.
I always love to talk water.
All right. So there's two funding sources through the Mountain Land Association of Governments. One is the Corridor Preservation Fund, which is just like it sounds, it's to acquire ground in anticipation of needed transportation arterials. The Corridor Preservation Fund, there is money available there, and there could be a good opportunity. The caveat or the hiccup is timing. So they require that a property has to be identified to MAG, which I think we've clarified in our meetings with them, it's been identified, but they are very, very firm that you cannot have closed on the property prior to MAG awarding a grant towards the property. And in order to get the grant, there's a couple hoops to jump through. One is you must get on the Regional Transportation Plan, or they call it the RTP. There are so many acronyms in government. So I'll try to give the full word for them because we can start to talk acronym speak really fast here. The, the RTP Regional Transportation Plan, in order for us to get on that, it's usually about a two-year process that that is updated periodically. So we're kind of in the middle of that two-year, and the only way to get onto the RTP is to be batched up with potentially other projects and then have an amendment made. So they are open to working with us to try to do an amendment. They have some other UDOT projects that they would try to upload to the RTP map with us. And they said at best, and government is slow, as we all know, we're not in Linden. Linden, we move, we're nimble. But larger government organizations, it takes time. At best, maybe August, September. And then we could potentially go after Corridor Preservation Funds. So if we miss that window as far as property closing that needs to happen, and we haven't gotten on the RTP yet, we may not have that opportunity. There's one other caveat to that. In order to get on the RTP or be eligible for the RTP amendment, we as a city would have to adopt this road as a minor arterial on our transportation plan. So that would be an action here by this body. They said that in the modeling that they looked at, that wasn't a really, in, in their mind, as far as a regional, I know you all were looking at that number that Adam presented. It's like, whoa, that seemed big. But to MAG, that was not a big number of, of use. And they also noted that the twenty fifty projection wasn't that much increase of use because it's going to serve mostly local. Here, people in Linden. But with that said, it barely qualifies in their mind as a minor arterial. So if you as a council wanted to attempt to go after that Corridor Preservation Funds, which we could potentially ask for a million, sorry, five hundred thousand to a million essentially in that, we would just need to jump through those hoops and try to get on board with that timeline. It would mean coordinating with the sellers because they are firm that if you close before you've gotten on the RTP and it's gone to the executive council that I sit on, and it's been voted on and awarded, and I am confident we could do that. They indicated Corridor Preservation applications once staff has had buy-off on it, which they do, they generally pass. And so, and then of course, I would work with all the other mayors to make sure that, you know, they see this as something that is helpful. So that's revenue source number one. Number two is to get on the tip project list. And tip, however, those funds are not available until twenty twenty-nine. But what's different about the tip is that you can go ahead and acquire property. You can even, in the meantime, have constructed the project. But if you, so the process for that would be, we would apply for the tip funds this fall. That will be reviewed by MAG in the spring. And then if that was awarded, then that's kind of set in stone that we'll get that reimbursement. But then we would just have to hold that those costs until twenty twenty-nine or twenty thirty to be reimbursed. And that would be strictly for road construction. That is not for land. Corridor preservation, from what I understand. Or maybe it's both. I would have to double check that. So anyway, those two things are possibilities for the city to have some help on the cost of this project. Just a.
Sorry.
What do we, what's on our plan right now as the road, if it's not a minor arterial?
So right now, it's, it's considered a major collector.
Collector, which doesn't qualify to get on the RTP.
And so they said it needs to be listed as an arterial. And as we quizzed them, they, we said, well, does that require us to change the speed or the width? It does not.
No change.
So it's the, you're changing the functional classification of the roadway, just identifying it that it may carry more traffic, but you're not changing anything else other than the color on the map. It is interesting. I should show this to you. And I, again, I just received this. We got this at like two o'clock today. This, let me see if that will come over here. For some reason, it's not. There we go. So this, back to this modeling map. So the first map that we showed you was the two thousand twenty-eight travel demand model. So estimated eighty-two oh two on the traffic. By twenty fifty, the number goes down to sixty-eight twenty-one.
And that's because of additional modes of transportation anticipated or corridor access.
Yeah. So we, we questioned that. That didn't make sense. And they said, well, it's because in our regional model, you're making all of these other improvements to the system or connections in other locations.
The busing or, you know, other.
Yeah, it was road, road connections primarily. So just an interesting twist on that. So.
One thing to council, and I think Adam. One thing to council, i- and I think Adam touched on this, just to clarify, I know some may be worried about. Um, you know, how the neighbors on Fourth West might view of the idea of a a connection here and what that means. I think one thing that we need to be cognizant of is UDOT has said they will do something to Two Hundred North. And that, at the very least, would be a median, they really don't want to do a signal because the two signals are so close to one another. And at the bottom of a hill like that, it's, there's tricky things with that, and then we also have, even within the corners of our city park and the current businesses. The amount of ground that might be affected to coordinate and put in a proper signal there, there's just a lot of challenges. Engineering-wise and space-wise, so at the very least, we might have medians put there if we don't do this road. And think about what that means, and if no one can get onto State Street for from left, make left turns. Except for much further south and much further north, now that distributes the traffic to people that live on Eighth West. And through the Pheasant Brook neighborhood, so, you know, that distribution burden, you know, starts to spread, so just something to think about. Uh, and even the people on Fourth West now may not be able, they'll be impacted by not being able to get in and out of their neighborhoods as conveniently, so. Something to think about. Yes, one.
Mayor, also, uh, if they decide to go with a traffic light on Two Hundred North, that will probably make more people turn onto Two Hundred North and One Thirty-five.
Oh, correct, I'm so glad you brought that up, we discussed that too.
That road is, I mean, we don't have the width to to make improvements to that road.
That's such a good point, if Adam can point that out for the public to see, so One Thirty-five is just a little country lane. And it's topographically, you know, like this, and there, and if you put a light at the end of that, now you're invite, you're basically. People are gonna use that as a cut-through to that light, and that street really isn't. Um, our engineers have indicated a lot of concern over making that a signalized road there. All right, any other questions, council? I would welcome anyone from the Thorntons to come forward if there's anything you'd like to add about this topic.
My only concern is Gilman Lane, what are you planning on doing with Gilman?
So the question was, what would happen with Gilman Lane, so UDOT has already indicated a couple things that Adam can repeat again. And I'll add my comments at the end of that about it.
So so ye- years ago, when we first bought this this piece, um, and and started talking with UDOT about realigning this traffic signal. Um, to align with this future roadway, the their engineers at the time said, hey, if you put this road through. Then Gilman's so close to this intersection, they would like to see Gilman closed, and we said, well, we can't close it, there's. There there's businesses and things that access off of this, and so this issue of, well, if you put the road through, then. Another road connection here that would take the majority of the traffic, and then maybe this part of Gilman turns into more of a driveway. And so that was kind of the current rationale, the current line of thought. Um, more recently, as we've talked to a couple of the engineers, and they've changed hands, so this is nobody that was there.
Engineers with UDOT.
Yeah, engineers with UDOT, this is nobody that was there at the time, that it sounds like they may be open to just leaving this to function as it does right now. Which which may not require this connection.
Or they could, they could make it a dedicated right-in, right-out only for safety, so people aren't trying to go across left. Right, right-in, right-out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. So that's the, right now, the the current plan on the city's master plan is to to have some sort of connection to Gilman. And with the intent that the section closer to State Street turns into more of a driveway, um, that that.
Safety is an issue there as well, yeah.
Yeah, that that's that's fine, as long as you consider Mom's House and Los Hermanos and.
Yeah.
Right, we wanted to make sure the businesses have proper access, certainly.
Yeah.
Any other questions, council? All right.
I did have a quick question, did we notice this to anyone in the neighborhood?
We didn't mail notices, it was on our agenda.
But we didn't mail out notices?
We didn't mail any notices, no.
Is that because, I guess, help me understand when we would notice versus when we wouldn't, and why this is not a noticing action?
Um, it's not a land use application, so typically, we would only notice on a land use application for a development. So when we bought the property on Seven Hundred North, we didn't send out notices, when we've sold property, we typically don't send out notices.
Okay.
But before a road would go in, would it have to be noticed?
It's not required to.
What about an open public meeting for this? I I I spoke to several people on Fourth West today, none of them knew about this and felt like, oh, I had no idea. I, and I guess, would we have a public meeting at the time we put in the road?
You could.
We could, but we wouldn't need to.
It wouldn't be required to.
It would be a good idea to do that, for certain, I mean it.
I'm not so, yeah, I'm not so sure it wouldn't have been a good idea to do it for this as well, I I feel like this e- essentially makes the road imminent. I think, a- a- and because of that.
Probably within three to five for sure.
For sure, I I I agree with that, because of that, it it is the decisions being made, and I. I always want to be cognizant of the public and and give them their chance, um, the five or so that I talked to had no idea. And and I, and and I, that makes sense to me now, why, why we wouldn't notice, but I wonder if we want to proactively do that? Is a thought that I had as we, as we go down this road, i- i- it, so much of this has been done in closed session. I feel like we've talked about it over and over again.
Yeah, I I just asked Mike, on the concept reviews that you've seen on these properties, we've never had an application for an actual development. None of those have been noticed either, so, concept reviews, we don't send notices. But neighbors still came for those, they knew and found out somehow. Um, so the agenda, we email it to all of the planning commissioners, city council members, and then there's a handful of residents that have requested to be on the agenda notice list. Uh, half a dozen or so.
Publicized and all.
And it's, yeah, it's posted, so we posted this last Wednesday.
And it is, you know, I think the other thing is the city, you know, we've talked about the infrastructure that's needed for for water, for storm, for a park. So it's kind of a multifaceted acquisition in that sense as well.
I think we've seen how traffic can fill the room, right, with our last decision, I know, seeing that number that this will double the traffic on Four Hundred West. I think, I think those people will want to have their day to to speak their piece. And it would be helpful to say, hey, we can do that down the road, this fit, this decision feels like it will. Solidify that we're doing this, I don't know, some, something to consider, something I thought of, uh, you know, we always love to. Get input.
I mean, your, your point is well taken there for sure, uh, obviously, it was there in nineteen sixty-eight again.
That that's a good point too.
And then when the, when the city purchased that other right-of-way, that land.
And my understanding, that that filled the the room quite a bit, right, fifteen years ago?
Certainly not what we had on Twelve Hundred East, meaning, but we had, there were people that came and were concerned about the city purchasing the property at that time.
Okay, just a thought.
But always with you, I'm always been, letting more people know what's going on, the better, despite all of the things we do online and.
Yeah.
Ju- just so that people are aware, which is a challenge and difficult to do.
Yeah, i- it's a hard one, where I I I totally understand why we're not required to. And and yet, I I'm gonna have a hard time explaining to a lot of people on Fourth West why this decision was made without any input from citizens. There, w- when it impacts them so so significantly, but, you know.
And I would say the, it's potential impact, and this is, I agree with Van, this is a multifaceted uh, purchase, and and there's a lot more to it than just the road. But we're sensitive to what we've experienced recently, but I think we have to keep in mind that this is bigger than just the road. And there, and obviously, we'll have that time, in fact, I would expect it, that we would invite people in before we ever put it.
I would love people to know, to that point too, that, you know, there's been multiple developers that have come forward that would have put this road in. And quite a number of, you know, proposing doors that many people were, you know, worried about. In this proposal, we're not, we're finding an avenue for the city to acquire this property, rather than it to be filled with. Doors and residential as proposed by some developers, and instead create, you know, park and basin and also improve the safety. I mean, we have actual crash data, I think if one of us had a family member or neighbor who was part of one of those crashes on State Street. Um, I have, I've had a family member who's been part of one of those crashes, um, coming in and out of premier family medical. So, you know, UDOT sees this as a safety issue, I think we're being proactive and responsible to look at ways to improve the safety. And make um, circulation for our local residents, I think that was really illuminating today. In that modeling, that they said clearly this was local residence, that this this helps in in mu- many ways. So we're hitting a lot, I think, rather than having a developer come through and do this, and then throw in, you know, all the density that I think these residents have seen a couple times. I wonder if they would be actually really happy with what this may look like instead.
You know, certainly, we've struggled with how do we transition from half-acre lots to the commercial area. And this becomes a very nice buffer in that regard.
I g- yeah, a- and I a hundred percent agree, like, this is the best spot for the the traffic light, that's a, the the, it, there are so many reasons for this. I, that I a hundred percent agree with, and and I understand that I may be outvoted, and I, and and understand that, I I see all the reasons why. And 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 can find myself there sometimes saying, yeah, this is the right decision. Um, I I guess I need to wrap my head around, are we, are you saying the whole thing? Are are we leaving any to residential? Do we plan on selling any of this residential, or does the park, the detention basin? And now we're not going residential at all?
I I would prefer to not do residential, I would prefer to have that open space. That that's a decision, obviously, to be made in the future, but for me, from my standpoint, I would prefer to keep it with the uses we've outlined.
My worry, I I I, I I think this council has come to the point where they said, hey, you know what, twenty thousand square foot lot probably doesn't work. And we've come off and said, hey, we would be open to something, not, not what's what's been proposed. I wanna, you know, a- as I get outvoted on this one, I would say, if if we're gonna do something about the residential. We need to do that before we purchase it, because if we say, hey, I I know at some point that uh, east, southeast portion, we said. Hey, maybe we put a couple ten thousand square foot lots on there, I think if we purchase this and then change the zoning to our benefit, I think that looks terrible. And perception is reality, that we we bought some property and then changed the zoning to our benefit. And so I I guess, I want to make sure we cover our assets there and and make sure we're not planning on changing the zoning. Cause, cause if we are, I say, let's continue this in meeting, let's change the zoning, and then let's purchase it. Because the opposite way looks like we are, you know, enriching ourselves through our zoning power. I guess would be my one suggestion, a- and.
I don't think there's a, you could ever in any conceivable fashion say we'd be enriching, it would be partial reimbursement at this point. We will have outlaid more than whatever could be made on some large, single-family lots.
I I don't know, I think if we buy it and change the zoning to benefit us, to sell more, I think, i- I think that. I think that it would not take any stretch of the imagination for the newspaper to say, hey, they bought some lots and uh. They told multiple developers, no, on twenty thousand square foot lots, or or on on less than twenty thousand square, and then we came in and then we did it ourselves, and so.
Well, for the record, I want to make sure we're clear, we did not say no to everything but twenty thousand square foot.
I agree, and that that came out wrong.
We said yes, we said yes to smaller density, single-family, I think, what was it, twelve thousand square foot lots was open?
Twelve thousand, perfect.
So let's have that correct on the record.
I agree, and 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 if we're comfortable with that, I would hope, well, if we're comfortable with that, and that's a route we might go. I'd just say, let's get our timing right so that there's not an article saying that we changed it after we bought it. Cause I think that's perception's reality, and it's a bad look. Do you disagree with that? Mayor?
Not necessarily, um, other than I think we need to find out the scope of what's needed for the infrastructure that's necessary there. And, you know, future council would need to appropriate, you know, park funds and development and make plans, and, you know, if there's a. And one, a few little parcels that become a home there in the commercial area or whatnot, or a budding this or that, a few lots. I don't, to me, I'm not sure that versus, it could have become forty units, I I don't know. I don't know that the residents there would have a whole lot of heartburn if we determine there's a little bit of excess property somewhere, but. Or maybe we will use it all, and it's not even gonna be an issue.
Whatever you do now or in six months, doesn't bind a future council from changing it, and so it's something to keep in mind that.
Yeah, that that's a good point.
It it, in ten, in ten years, a future council can change it, and so.
You know, which is part of of my disagreement in the beginning of us purchasing, is is we're playing developer potentially with with some of this. We we may sell residential lots, which I think puts us, the government, in the role of developer. A- and and, you know, to Van's point, hopefully, we don't, and and maybe we won't have to. I just don't know that that's our proper role, and and so.
How's that different than Seven Hundred North?
Yeah, that that's a great point, residential feels a little different than commercial in my mind, but but that's a great point, that's a, that's a fair point. I don't know. I I do think commercial is different than residential, I I do worry about us changing the zoning. Where our, we have set a precedence, uh, councils for many, many years have said twenty thousand square foot lots below the canal. We buy a property, and this is the first time without an inter-local agreement that we change it. I- i- it would be, it would be out of character, it would be, I, it could be construed negatively, I think. With that said, I, again, so many benefits to this that I that I definitely understand.
So Jake, there, it sounds like there's two different um, things you've brought up, both with the same end of a continuance. One is um, noticing or people having an opportunity to come in, and the other is order of operations, zoning and purchase. Is your overall sense that, um, with the first of the noticing, that people are hoping they can come with the intention of having the road not go through ultimately?
Yeah, and I would imagine, a- and that's why I can wrap my head around it, is is that the road will be the contentious part. The the increase of traffic to Four Hundred West will be the contentious part, and this, while I think it 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 cements that that road is going in. This isn't a decision about a road, which Adam put so well in the very beginning, this isn't that time, and so. I I think having that opportunity down the road, but I do think. It's gonna be tough to tell the residents, oh, we're gonna let you speak your piece when the decision's already been made, I mean, we're making the decision tonight to put a road in there.
Well, the the decision is actually made because it's on our transportation plans since nineteen sixty-eight.
Which was another time they could have had a, an opportunity to to speak their piece as well.
The property owners have a right to sell their property, and they have, and so when this property sells and is developed, it will trigger a road, end of story. Unless that plan was drastically changed, so whether someone comes in and it all becomes homes, and that we don't have a park, and we don't have a. You know, detention basin and a well site, the road's gonna be there.
Sure, and they could have, they could have requested to take it off, similar to Mr. Gardner did, which which they haven't, so. I I see where you're coming from, and and I agree with those points.
I just appreciate, cause I would hate to, you know, I I've just been operating under the assumption that the road's going through. And then now it's a question of what the land around it will look like, but when you brought that up, I was like, oh, I might be missing something, that there's some other mechanism. I mean, that timetable surely changes um, in in some ways, so, but just wanted to make sure.
It being on the master plan, I think, uh, I I think certainly covers our backs, right? This has been on the master plan for a long time, I don't think it covers us from citizens being frustrated that. I don't think it covers us from citizens being frustrated that we are pushing this road. We're purchasing it, we're moving it forward, when we've never done that with the exception of 700 North for a road.
With the exception of the purchase of the right of way and the church.
Right, on this exact road. Good point, great point.
That's, that's tough.
I don't know that I would, I mean, certainly we're taking action to support this. Are we pushing it? Jake, it's a very, very good point, and I'm sitting here really mulling that over. I don't feel that I'm pushing this, and maybe I am, as, as much as UDOT's saying, we have to make a decision, right? We've been, we've been processing these, UDOT, do you guys want a double light, right? That's not gonna be the best for our residents, that's not gonna be the best for everybody that traverses, uh, State Street, which is far more than just our residents, right? But them coming to this point where they're saying, we've got accident data, something needs to happen. We're going to make some changes, and this is just giving us an opportunity to control that freight train of what UDOT plans to do. So, is it that we're pushing it, or is it that UDOT's data is pushing it? You know, maybe it's a little bit of both.
I agree, great point, Lincoln.
If it weren't for UDOT, and if it weren't for the safety of this road, I don't know that I would be as firm in where I'm leaning right now.
And Jake, to your point, I, the conversations I've had with folks down there, there's a, a, a bit of a resignation around, oh, there's this road. You know, they're like, ha, that, that's frustrating. And so then the second question becomes the density of the development by it. And so in the longer conversations that I've had of late down there, when I've talked to them about all of the overlaying parties involved and all of that, it seems like the general thrust is the lower density. The lowest density possible is the ideal with that. And so, do you, but does that jive with what your conversations have been?
I, I, I think the further away, the further you go down 400 West, the less it becomes about the density and more it becomes about the traffic. But, but definitely, the closer you get, the more it became about density. I agree. And, and you know, all this, in addition to my number one issue, which was the financial issues with, with what we're doing in our closed session, which we've talked, uh, about, so-
Yeah, and I think it's gonna be really, really important regardless. Anytime we see any of our roads in the community starting to have more traffic or people not obeying the law, the, the posted speed enforcement, but also, uh, traffic calming measures that are appropriate, um, to implement throughout the community is something our, you know, we as a council and staff can really be cognizant of and, and, and invest in those measures, uh, to, to keep the traffic-
I agree.
-at the posted speeds. And, and I was very encouraged to hear that, um, you know, at this point, we would keep the speed limit, the, the residential speed limit it has been. That wouldn't be required to be increased, and I think that's gonna be really important. And then there's measures that we can invest in to, to, to keep that hopefully safe.
Just as an FYI, I think similar battles have been occurring in, in prior councils. It was in the mid to late 90s when this road connection on 4th East used to not connect to Pleasant Grove. Uh, the canal there was open and there was a planned connection. Um, and they chose to put that road through. The cities actually participated and, and made that connection to improve traffic flow. And I know that significantly increased the traffic on that roadway. The other one that's more recent was the Center Street connection, um, across the canal. Um, that was probably 20, I would guess, 2012-ish, 2010? Um, doesn't seem that long ago.
It was yesterday.
Yeah, and so, uh, Center Street did not used to connect. And, and we had it master planned to connect through there. And we heard from residents about some concerns there when the city chose to do that. Um, in the end, I think that's been a positive thing. Um, the school connection particularly, um, has, has been a good thing, and so-
I, I agree with that.
Just, just some things to keep in mind. I know these are, these are challenging, um, it, it definitely increases traffic. Um, looking back, if we were to say, we're now gonna close that, I think people would go crazy.
I agree.
And so-
Did you have public hearings for that? You say people went crazy, what, when, when did they have their opportunity to go crazy?
No, I would say if they closed the roadway, they would go crazy.
No, you mentioned you had a lot of people when they, when you wanted to punch it through.
With this one, that, that predated me, so I, I just remember Mayor Dane saying that they had a room full, so I don't know what that process was. With this one, my recollection was, it was the immediate neighbors that knew that we were looking, uh, at pushing that through. I don't recall that we sent out notices, but I would have to double check that, so.
So, the, what are immediate downsides to continuing? So, as Jake was mentioning, we would miss the June meeting deadline, it sounds like, to get on the UDOTs.
Are you asking me?
Yeah, whoever mentioned, yeah. Mike, you'd mentioned to get on June's UDOT, it would be, we'd have to send something to them this week, right? So then, a continuance, it would just mean we'd bump that timetable back? When is, any other reason, any other consequences of a continuance?
You have a willing seller right now that maybe that timeframe changes that, I don't know that.
Sure.
You know, and I, and I look at the reasons-
Acquire the land. Post 1968 or pre 1968? I mean, just from a standpoint, did you own the land and then there's- So it was before 1968?
I, I, what I worry about, and watch me argue against myself here. For me, the decision comes down to, I want the public to have their say. Uh, I always do, right? And, and, and the five people I texted were like, what, are you serious? Like, oh no. The other piece is, I worry about us changing that zoning, I really do. I think that's a bad look. And I don't know that we're gonna know that until two years down the road. You, you know what I mean? So that's hard, 'cause, 'cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna push this two down, two years down the road for the sake of the seller, for the sake of, um, the money that, that the mayor's acquired through UDOT. 'Cause I don't know that I'll have, I don't know that we'll be able to satisfy what we're going to do with that excess land for years, probably. But, but I do think, I do think there's probably a high chance, more than 50, that we have some residential lots at the end of this thing that we decide whether we wanna sell or not. And I think that even this council, who's, who's conservative by most people's opinions, is willing to go off that 20, 20,000, and if we are, maybe we make that change now so that, so that the perception isn't that we bought it, changed it.
Or would we kinda stir a pot by changing the zoning on this whole thing that makes people think now we're gonna have X number of doors, when really that's not our intent?
Yeah, especially where we're only doing the northeast. I, I, I mean, the last time we discussed it in close, it seemed like it was the northeast portion that we would end up with outside of our park, outside of our retention basin. And, and it was like three or four lots, so it's, it's hard.
Yeah.
Mike mentioned you could, I mean, if you own, own the property or, I don't think you'd wanna do it before that, but after you own it, you could rezone it as a public facility and so that it's protected at least from going through another zone change would have to happen. And then we would notice everything, but it's not, not for, again, it doesn't bind a future council from changing the zone, so.
It doesn't bind that-
Go ahead, Lincoln.
Adam, it, it doesn't bind that, uh, future council, but it does require, if we put in any, in any sort of residential legislation now, says that single-family dwellings and/or those with twin home overlays does not come to a council, right? That's planning commission, that's my constat, whereas the public facility zoning would indeed require it to come back to the city council. So, yeah, we can't bind a future city council, but we can at least try and shape it as much as possible. I wouldn't be against that, that PF zoning. I, I think that might have merit from the special and be worth, worth doing, considering.
I'm gonna say this, because politically you may not be able to say this. A downside to continuing this is you're gonna have a room full of people that are upset about a future road, and you may still vote to put the road on there. And then you have a room full of people that feels like they didn't get hurt. It's exactly what happened with 1200 East.
Although, I think, I think sometimes getting good information is helpful for the community in that, hey, we've got these stats and safety issues on State Street. UDOT's gonna do something here, could very well likely be medians, you know, that obstruct your daily life in, in access and maybe causes more traffic in other neighborhoods and other roads. And there's, you know, the city has these other issues. I know a lot of people in Lakeview wanna see their street improved and that infrastructure done, and all these things are really tied together. So, sometimes information, and it's been on the map since 1968, it's, you know, this is not, this isn't a way to avoid high-density housing going on this piece. I mean, I think these are points that people could, could weigh.
It's not the first time this road has been discussed in a public meeting, so.
And to change the den, to, to put residential in there, less than 20,000 square feet, we would have to come back and change the zoning anyway.
With council, not just planning commission.
With council, yeah.
That was misstated by Lincoln, right?
Yeah, that's right. So, so yes, if we've got a piece that's left over that's 20,000 square feet, we could put a house on that. But if we're gonna do anything less than that, it's gotta come to the council and it's gotta go through the public hearing with the public notice, so.
There's kind of different pros and cons every way you go. Certainly.
Anybody else have any things they want to share, questions to ask? I am ready to make a motion.
Do it, my man.
I move to approve the purchase of 6.12 acres of property at 400 West Lakeview Road, as presented.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Stewart. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries, it passes.
Okay, for the Thorntons, we will coordinate with your Realtor and talk with you a little bit more on timing and talk about some earnest money and see what we can do to try to wrap this stuff up with UDOT in it as quick as we can. And thank you for your patience and your sticking it out, so.
And we would like to work with you potentially, and that, what I was explaining earlier, the corridor preservation fund timing, there's some caveats to that. We'd love to explore with you, so, all right.
Okay, we'll be, we'll be in touch. I'll, I'll get ahold of Patrick tomorrow morning, so, okay.
You don't have to leave. More riveting information coming.
We would love to know how you feel about the pirate ship.
Big deal. Thanks for your patience, though, to, to your whole family, longtime Linden residents. We appreciate you.
All right, we will move now to item number nine. This is a discussion item, no action necessary regarding our Aquatics Center amenity refurbishment. We'll invite our Parks and Recreation Director, Heath Bateman, to present the information.
Before he starts, I have to leave at 6:45. I don't want the rest of the council thinking that I'm offended and leaving. I, I texted Mayor and Adam that I had to leave at 6:45. I am not offended.
Oh, I will be offended that you leave.
I, that's why I had to clarify. I don't want anyone thinking I'm storming out.
Jake, we've got a team link set up, you can just join like me.
There you go, there you go.
Right in the middle of my sentence, just storm out.
Play red ship.
Then I'll figure it out.
Mike, sometimes we can manage with Sam's laptop. So, give me about four minutes to do it, okay? So I can say I've done it once.
Today's your day.
Oh, that's funny.
Counsel, thank you, Mayor, for coming here. We received word from Adam that there were some questions about the, the cost of, of what we're planning on doing out in, in the Aquatics Center. So Alan, uh, with, he's, he's the keeper of pitchers in the city. So Alan has got some really interesting pitchers. He and I kinda worked on this. I've got Alex here and Alan here to answer the questions, uh, that we might have. But I, I'm just gonna go through this and, and ask if there's, there's any questions, um, that you have. In fact, maybe that's the best way, because there's lots of pitchers and there's some good information there. But are there any questions right from the get-go that we can maybe answer? That mount there? The business side, the conservative side, the fis, fiscal conservative, how do we justify 350,000 for a play amenity? That's what I'm hoping you can help me get to. Or, and I know there's much more expensive ones that could be in there as well. How did, you know, I know you've talked about, every so often you have to have a new, is it every five years, every five years?
That's what's suggested, yeah.
There's something, needs to be a new draw, and I don't know if this becomes a new draw, if it's the same thing that goes back in.
Yeah, right, the, the draw.
But what's, what's the, the punch to say, hey, this is a good investment? And it could be that it's just people liking it. Well, I think it'd be a good idea to maybe just mention a couple of things. Uh, I'll let, if you, if you read all these, it's, it's been 16 seasons since we've opened. And we've had, uh, this is kind of our iconic piece for the, for the USS Heritage, for Otte Dameron's Heritage Park Aquatics Center. People throughout the valley call that the pirate pool. So there's a little bit of an identity that we wanna, to, to try to keep. But here's, here's the, the situation. It is cracked and breaking down. And the second thing that really needs to be considered, and it's listed in this, it's gotta come off the plences regardless in order to do the surfacing of the pool. So we've got Tucker Crane who said, those are, those boats, both boats are three pieces. They've got lifting lugs in them. And so he, just like when they set them on, he believes he could come take them off. And the condition at the takeoff, we're not so sure about, if they'll survive the take, uh, off. So regardless on, on this issue, we just gotta remember that, that in order to do the surfacing, they've gotta be moved. And do we put them back? Do we, so do we leave the plences empty? Uh, we did put some pictures in here of the current condition. You can see on this picture, it's not so much the bolts where the pirate ship was. It, that rubber coating is gone and that concrete is exposed to the weather and has cracked. 'Cause that's a, like, you've, you've felt it, you've all been there. It's like a, a painted on rubber coating. Is that a good word, Alex, a rubber coating?
Yeah.
Yeah. How, how, this lasted 16 years, how long should it have lasted? And any of the stuff that you're proposing as possibilities, how long should it last? Are we expecting it to be 16 years again? Did we, you know, did we double what they were thinking and, or are we half of what it should have been? Here's, here's, here's two of the issues that go along perfectly with that. If you remember, the company that was building this for us went out of business. And CEM drove down there at the, at the bank sale when they were ready to lock the buildings. He rented a truck, he hired everybody standing around in the yard, and he drove this boat to, up here to South Salt Lake. He built pads for it and the company had closed their doors and they had finished that boat in the yard of CEM because he had that promised. So that company is kaput, so we've never really been able to ask them anything about this. However, I think 16 to 20 years is a pretty good time.
So Heath is correct. But we did have representatives that used to work for the company that he's talking about have created their, a new company.
You're still not talking?
I'm sorry, bring the mic up here. And so we've had them come up and look at the pirate ship and the current condition and, and, uh, and how they feel it will handle being moved and moved back in place. And, uh, the gentleman that came up, he didn't say, well, it should have lasted X long, but he did say this is in really good condition considering where it's been for the past 16 years. So, but he did acknowledge that we have some, some pretty large cracks in that concrete. We have pieces that have fallen off. And as anybody that's worked with concrete knows, once it starts degrading, it, they degrade, just get bigger and worse.
So we have no idea what it should have done?
No, he didn't say it should have lasted this long, but he says it's in really good shape for as long as it's been here.
Okay, so then with some of the other things coming up that you've looked at, how long do they say those last?
And, you know, I didn't ask that question, but we could do that.
For me, that's a must piece of information.
Some of the warranty information. I know when we opened our indoor pool in West Jordan, that play structure lasted about eight years indoor. And it wasn't concrete, there was some, but it was just an indoor play structure. Uh, I know the stairs at the Lehigh Legacy Center, all those concrete indoor pool lasted less than 10 years. So I, he was pretty impressed. And like Alex mentioned, it was the part of the team that built it originally that are under a new name. So we could find out any kind of warranty on any of that stuff. The surfacing is also an issue. Because the surface, we got what we, we thought we would get out of the surface, the, the Murtha liner. 16 years is pretty good. If you can get it to 18 or 20, you're really doing well. And that's for indoor and outdoor applications.
Compared to our other parks, so we invest in large play structures and amenities and other parks, what would be the cost, say, of, like the play structure in, in our City Center Park and the interactive beeping?
That interactive, that's been 15 years. I think that the Neals system was 50,000.
And then the new play structure there?
The new playground was 350.
350, so this is comparable to other play structures in our, in our parks, potentially?
Yeah, correct, so again.
And how long do those last?
10 to 12.
Thank you, you took the one.
10 to 12.
10 to 12.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, the warranty is quite early, but the salesman especially, but also the inspectors come looking when you've got things that are cracking and the plastic is tainting. And so we say 10 in our business. And I don't know if you did that in Springfield, that's about right, 10 to 12. 15 might work.
So essentially, it sounds like we got pretty good mileage out of this potentially. And it's not out of line with the investments that are made in other park play structures.
Yeah, if you look at a playground.
In today's dollars.
Yeah, the playground, when you look at, some of the playgrounds I put in this last year were 200 for that little playground. I mean, the, the price is, it's way up. And I, I don't necessarily agree with it, but. So we, we presented you four options. We could restore the USS Heritage boat. And, and probably this is the best page to look at. The Murtha product, which we need to do is 30,885. The installation is 84,200. This is just the surface and we need the boats off for the surface. Moving of the ship, 29, 290, and, and there's lots of things included with that. I think that the Tuckers will give us a great price, less than that, to move it. Then there's ship refurbishes, really 205. Without the ship refurbished, we still have to do 144,375 to get that liner redone. Again, 15, 15 to 20 years, I, I think we did really well outdoors with winters like we did to make it last 16 years.
This is the third and final phase of replacing that?
Correct, correct. You can see some of these small, more inexpensive things. In fact, Alan put these pictures, these are without the boats. Can you see the plences? They're where the boat should go. This is the first year it was open.
Isn't that Alan's picture on option number one? I thought I saw there.
I'll tell you, it's, it doesn't matter, but actually that's the, the Ducky Derby. That guy showed up out of nowhere, nobody knew who he was with. Looked just like him, walked around the boat and threw his hair back and walked like he was drunk anyway. Yeah, so we've really got to come up, the decision is should we refinish that boat and make sure we can put it back on the plences? Or we have an option to just leave the plences open? And just let the kids play maybe with a couple of sprinklers? You can barely see it on the one with the slide. You can see that little sprinkler that we put on the pipe that services the boat. That's just a little sprinkler they did on the first year. The best option for that, for safety however, is to have those plences removed. Because then we've got kind of a zero entry and we don't have a big step for those little kids. We don't have to guard that little area. If that was the decision that the council made. But you can see that the moms were sitting in there and the kids were playing in there. That was the first year we were open.
And this is both pieces of that, is what we're talking. Does it include that bucket that dumps?
It does. And what else, the, what do they call those, Alan? The masts of the boat? Yeah, the, the masts of the boat, which is rusted right now. And Alex has some of them removed, spars, because we're not so sure they'll stay up. But this is where we're at. We've got all kinds of little things that we can do and look at the costs. If we wanna just do a couple of little things, that was the closest we could get, which was around 300,000 to 1.5 million to put in a play structure like goes inside. So with that, knowing that, that in order to, to maintain this pool, we really need to get that surface done. Do we wanna spend the 200,000? Do you feel comfortable spending that 200,000 on that boat? Upsides, is it keeps with our identity? It, it works well? You're gonna get 15, 16 years out of it? Maybe if it's built a little bit better than a bunch of guys in a yard up here that are out of work now putting it together, maybe we could get 15 to 20 years out of it. Or do you want to throw a couple of sprinklers in on the plences and, and run it that way? Alex, do you have anything you want to add?
Just that if we, like Heath mentioned, if we leave those plences with just the way they would be, we'd have that drop off into the, the water that would be kind of a hazard for the young kids. And if we looked at just removing those plences to cut all that concrete out, repour that floor, we're probably looking another 100,000 to, to do that. So it'd be in a, you know, it'd be an expense either way. Just depends on how much, where we wanna put our, our funds.
Is there a, a commitment point? Cause if it's refurbish, repair, if you lift it up and it goes and you're like, there's nothing left to refurbish or repair. Did you like that sound effect?
I, I did. We, we have thought about that. In fact, that was the leading part of our discussion. I guess if all bets are off, if it, if it caves in underneath. We believe the infrastructure underneath will work. It's the pieces of concrete falling off the skeleton that we think might happen.
Sure.
When that happens, with the I-beams and, and the stuff that's underneath.
So it's like you're gonna lift it up and then those moments of truth will determine which path you have to go. Okay, so we, it's not like committing ahead saying ship ref, water park excitement. We're like, here's a check for 205 and they get a pile of concrete dust. You know, then, yeah, I'm just, that, I guess my concern is if we're saying refurbish, repair, and it's not repairable, if we've just lost this money or that just goes towards replacing it with something else?
Well, the, the company that would be doing the ship for us has asked and they demand to be here when we do move that.
Okay.
So that they can basically see what's going on and help us, you know, let's, let's do it this way and that way. Our thoughts just really to move it from where it is over the deck.
Yeah.
So they can work on it while the, while the pool's getting resurfaced and then just set them right back. So the move is as minimal as we can get.
Do they take it off-site and take it to their place? And what exactly does refurbish mean to them? What are they actually doing in that regard? Is it just painting over it?
So we're going to, like I said, we're gonna set it on the deck. They will work on it here, on our deck. So they'll work on it here. Uh, they're basically, they're going to strip all the, all the paint, all the coatings off the concrete. They'll repair all the concrete, return it back to shape. They're gonna repair all of the, um, there's, and they haven't been on for a while. There's cannons that are supposed to be on there where the kids can, can spray. They'll repair those, get those working for us again. Uh, they'll re, they'll recult the slides, redo that. They'll, they'll redo our, our mast there with the bucket, recoat that, get that back into shape. They're gonna redo that bucket. If you look at that bucket now, you can see it's, it's pretty faded. And so basically, when that ship comes back, it should be in new condition. They'll, they'll blast out any concrete they, you know, sandblast out any concrete they need to and, and, and put it back in there. He looked at the, the inside structure, the, the mastic and the, the way it's put together in there and the, the mesh that it sprayed into and that. He feels that that's in pretty good shape. The metal structure's actually in really good shape. So it's mostly just the outside and seal it better cause a lot of the, the breaks and when you have concrete, you've got rebar inside. When it's wet all the time, the rebar starts to, and that's what pops concrete off. So they'll, they'll ref, redo those things.
Epoxy coated rebar?
Epoxy coated rebar, yeah. And so that, so that we should hopefully be able to get another 15, 16 years out of it.
I wanted, Alan, you know, let me introduce you to the passion, Alan.
I'm, I'm the passion, yes. Okay, yeah, so, you know, I, out of all of this, I think, out of all the options from the passion side, it would be tough to lose this water feature, something that people come to. You know, this is the small kid's slides. And so if we lose this, we do lose out on the small kid's slides. You know, if we do make this into a zero entry, that would be just a, a nice plain pool. But this just gives it some, a face and a feature for the aquatic center. Now, that, it is money, you know, it's, it's, it's not gonna add anything new really besides maybe some movable cannons, but it gets it back up to working condition. And so again, I, I mentioned this multiple times in there, but it is really the face of the pool. And this is what people associate with our facility, that and the lazy river. But yeah, some of those projects, those, specifically those 1.5, completely remove everything and make that pool a one-foot pool completely, not a zero entry. And yeah, and so that's, that's kind of where I'm at for.
You, you would have your preference to get the ship back?
I, yeah, in fact, I titled this project SOS, Save Our Ship. But it really is come, it comes down to finance for that, so whatever works best.
So Alan, can you compare me, it looks like we're 350,000 for the ship or 300,000 for this other water option there? This seems, from what I hear from residents, to be a great place for toddlers. Can you compare the ship to that other 300,000 dollar option, both in value in your opinion today?
Yeah.
And then Alex, Heath, I'd love to have you weigh in. 15, 16 years from now, what's the maintenance gonna be like on the pirate ship versus maybe this other 300,000 dollar option?
Yeah, the, the other 300,000, the one from Vortex, that, that feature, they pride themselves on simplistic, but also user-friendly. There are things that they could touch and twist and water can pour out. It goes down to one slide, it is a climbable feature. The downside for me is it loses out on this, this very unique. They build tons of these ones, these vortex playable structures. And so this one that was built specifically for this facility just gives it a nice face versus the plastic and the Plexiglas that will get hard water all over it. So for a water feature, this, this literally is 300,000 from Vortex. Ours would be 205,000 for fixing our ship. But then maybe to some, uh, you guys.
You know, I think, go ahead. Tell me what the Murtha product is again?
It's the surfacing of the, the pool, the, where they stand on and on the walls. It's the, the fabric, the plastic.
That light blue color in the water, it's actually like a vinyl type of liner that's a couple millimeters thick.
Okay, so the 144 is those top two lines? I was trying to do the math in my head.
Top three. Yeah, so the 144 is the top three numbers.
Okay, I'm with you.
So just as an FYI, Jake on his way out asked me to relay on to you guys. He said when he and his family have gone, this is the spot that his little, little kids, two, three, four-year-olds can play. And he said, we don't really have anything in the pool for those little tiny kids amenities-wise other than just splashing around in the little fountain squirt things. So he, he sounded more in favor of this.
Seeing this breakdown, looking through all the pictures and hearing the stuff, when it was first 350,000 for the ship, you go, okay, come on, we need to talk about that. But I'm, I'm very comfortable with this and would want to proceed.
Yeah, and I agree with keeping it on there. When we go there, we, our little kids, it's a big deal.
I love that it's the, kind of the character of the pool. It's, it's what people see. I think that's important. I would hate to see without, cause seeing some of these pictures, it looks plain. Water's nice, that's what they come for, but.
Lincoln, that, just one comment on this ship versus a new ship. This is more than you would get for the 350. There may be some dials and twists and a couple little dump buckets. But this is interactive to climb on and to use and to play on. So I think this 205, you're, you're saving money than buying something other that's new if this works out right.
Yeah, the ship's 205.
So we'd be spending additional 100,000 just to get the Vortex, correct?
Yeah. Without the, the liner, yeah. That's it.
So looking at the numbers, the liner has to happen regardless. So I think that first number of 350 wasn't, you know, now that we know, we could really need to piece that out as the necessary repair. All right, counsel.
Okay.
This is just a discussion item, so it sounds like thumbs up on, are you clear on how to proceed?
Thank you.
All right, well, our wonderful director here for another action item. This is regarding our Park Arts, Recreation and Culture Mini Grant Awards.
Does he do the blowing off of the pickleball courts or arrange it? Who arranges to get the pickleball courts, have a blower go in and clean them off from time to time? Can we do that there? That ought to be a regular part of our maintenance of whatever we do.
The post do, let me check.
I can assure you, they're dirty.
Elite grounds is supposed to take care of it?
Just our staff, yeah. And when they're putting on, in the spring, when they're turning on water, it's pretty thin with just the two of them. But we've got two seasonals that started last Monday, so they're, they're really pretty bad.
I would think with the blowers.
Leaves and trash and junk.
Great, thanks, sorry.
All right, no problem, good, great question. Okay, so we'll move forward then on to learn about the grant awards applications and those that we will be supporting through the park tax.
Unfortunately, we didn't receive anybody new, but I think.
Yeah, they're all the same, right?
Yeah, they're all the same as last year. You'll notice that there is a, a little bit of a discrepancy in the total and I didn't really point that out. The DePacem Choir had originally asked for more because they thought our building rental was more. But when we straightened that out with them, they had a 78, $100 request. But when we got our numbers for our building squared away, it was only 66, 6. So at the bottom line, we, again, we budgeted 15. Last year, the council chose to award almost the same amount. It was 19, 396. This year, our requests are 19, 808. And that's with everybody getting what they require, what they qualified for and what they requested. So we can, we can jockey that around a little bit and, and get that number back down to 15 pretty easily. Linden Elementary PTA, who's been in this about all 10 years, has a music and arts program that is astounding. So much so that they hired that arts teacher, so.
Does the DePacem Choir rehearse in our community center?
They don't, this request would ask if they could.
They would begin to, and that's why the fun.
But they're looking for a two-concert venue, something like Wadley Farms, and they're not giving that building away for free.
Is it two events that they wanted for that, was it 4,500?
Yeah, I, it's two events. But I think, something tells me that that's just to fund one of them, that they were gonna fund the other one themselves.
And did they do that last year?
Yes, but, this is another good piece of information, they couldn't find the event center that would work. So they do have some carryover money. A couple of organizations have. A couple of organizations have up to a thousand, maybe a little bit more that they are, that they're planning on using to add to this.
What does Wadley Farms have or what location do they want for that concert that they couldn't do in our community center or?
It's, for her, it's all about acoustics.
Yeah, so what does Wadley Farms have?
Better, sounds better. It sounds like a concert hall in their big castle. And I don't know much about it other than that's what she cites in her, in her decision or something like that. But because the park tax requires a big presence in Linden, I think she's latched on to the Wadley Farms to do a concert, their concert in Linden and to help pay for that.
I mean, that's close to twenty-five percent of the entire park grant one event rental.
So this sounds like, in their request, they want to start practicing in our building. Let me see, bring that, the DePach, how did you pronounce that? Is that?
DePacham.
DePacham?
DePacham.
They want to start practicing in our building for forty-eight hours of rehearsal time. And then they want forty-five to do Wadley Farms for a Monday night concert.
Is the concert free to?
It is free.
Concert goers?
It is free.
That's a good question.
Everybody could, we could trim everybody a little if we needed to do that. The performing arts and visual arts at the elementary, they've been well-funded and they have proven it and they want to get some microphones for their stage productions. And the Garden Valley Pipe Band does whatever we want them to do and they use our building and then concerts.
They helped us with our park tax.
Absolutely.
Our park tax video, they were great.
The United Angels Foundation is a class for special needs at our building. The choir and then the chanteonnets just want enough for a little bit of administration money and to do an opening and closing social in the vets hall. And they do concerts at Spring Gardens and some of these others, this singing group with chanteonnets.
A lot of service with the performances.
I'm comfortable with this. Me too. You know.
Okay.
What is the total amount that we allocate right now in the next year's budget? I'm just curious for.
Fifteen thousand has been earmarked for this and that's just.
And that's been the same for a while.
The very beginning.
An inflationary escalator on that.
We do approve, but that more.
Yes, but I'm just saying as a specific line item.
Correct.
Call out, interesting.
So that's why that twenty-five, twenty-six request is twenty-one zero zero eight, but really, they estimated they needed seventy-eight hundred sixty for our building when really the forty-five hours came out at sixty-six, sixty.
DePacham, if they, did they indicate they had some rollover funding then to make that gap?
They did.
So sometimes I know with our education grants, they have to say if for some reason they don't get enough funding to do what they claim, what they hope to do, can they still execute on the?
They particularly asked and I have, they turn in, every one of these groups turns in a year-end report to me to show me and they list what they didn't spend and if they've got a couple of hundred dollars, they tell me what this is planned for and their allocation should go down or they should have a little bit more planned. We don't ask for the money back, we just chose not to do that. But if it gets like, we feel like there's an abuse, we can certainly put that policy in place.
Want to get the report? I'm in favor of this unless other questions are. I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six park tax mini grants as presented with the things that you, those aren't really changes, but they're as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Stewart. Any further discussion? All right, we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that is unanimous.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. I think that is a great use of our park tax funds and for our cultural arts support in the city. That's, those are some exciting things for the community to enjoy.
I do want to see Alan in that pirate outfit.
I've got one. He can borrow it. He probably has his own.
Alan has more costumes than I could count.
All right.
Thanks, Steve, for your work.
Thank you. All right, we are now on item number eleven. This is a review and action item regarding the sixteen hundred North UDOT right-of-way
So this item, this has been in the works for a number of years. UDOT has been working on acquiring property along the sixteen hundred North corridor, our six hundred South. What's identified in this image is this blue, blue line here is the outline of the area that they're acquiring right-of-way. They recently added this little portion of road to this acquisition request. And so that's indicated as new from a previous iteration of this. What's interesting on this is when it was maybe five, eight years ago, somewhere in that window, there were some improvements made to the interchange area on our side of the interchange. They widened a couple of these intersections. And at that time, UDOT picked up a lot of these properties and then deeded them to Linden City. And now they're asking for us to deed them back. And so it was kind of an interesting process. And so pretty much the only piece that we're really transferring to them that hasn't already been in their ownership before is this section right there and then the strip in front of Mazer Academy. And so.
That section you just highlighted, how does that do what we need when that other road eventually, does it handle the traffic that could handle it?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes. And so as we talked about, that road today with our engineer and the UDOT and MAG people, it sounds like that will function fine. We haven't had any indication that we need a wider.
The classification of the road going south in Orem is an arterial already, classified as an arterial. So just going south in Orem.
I'm sure it's just a mistake, but the arrows drawn on a picture that's coming up shows two left-hand turns and two right-hand turns. And it doesn't look like you get the opportunity to go straight right there.
Right. Oh, let me go back, sorry. Which one were we on?
That one.
That one.
Oh, so this is, that's the park and ride.
Well, that's, okay, I was thinking that was at the.
Yeah, so the yellow, what they did is they gave you two sets of maps. There's the one where they highlighted the parcels we're transferring in yellow and then another one that was just without the highlights.
Got you.
So this is kind of the start of it and then as we move uphill, then it transfers to these other images. So that intersection is right there.
No, go ahead.
Oh, so we have looked at in the past, that right-hand turn lane is really narrow. I don't know if you've been on that. And we looked at widening at one point, just trying to get that to go in smoother. And that's what it looks like they're attempting to do. So the current sidewalk is actually right there. It's hard to see in that color photo.
Where's that big pole? Is that on the east side?
So it's on the other side of the street.
From what I understand, they're planning to have a right-hand turn lane that goes on the inside of the pole. So the pole will not move.
The big pole is right there.
It's huge.
Yeah, I can imagine that.
So, yeah, so they're going to leave that in place and then make that an island essentially is what we understood. And then you can see here, they have a dedicated right-hand turn lane that'll go in through that property. So they are flaring the curb and gutter a little bit and pulling it back and then with this. So I think that'll help that left-hand turn where it'll allow people to kind of start to make that turn.
Right.
And then as it goes up the hill, there's a little strip there in front of Mazer. And then of course, our road right-of-way. In the end, this is, this is something we've already agreed to transfer the road through a separate agreement to UDOT. This is the deeds that go with that.
Is that a prior agreement then?
It was.
Okay.
Yeah, so really the biggest issue is that they've added that little segment that we've highlighted. If I get the right page.
I had wondered if that zero dollar was a holding place.
Yeah.
Or can we fill in our own number?
It truly is that number.
Yeah, it really is a zero. And again, mostly because this was land that they had acquired and then they paid for it, bought it from the landowners and then deeded it to the city. So other than this little highlighted piece on Fourth West, which my assumption, I have no idea how long that road's been there, but my assumption is that was probably dedicated through some development anyways. And so, yeah, pretty, I think pretty straightforward. Our engineers have reviewed this and checked all the deeds and they're comfortable with that. We do have one, it's a separate agreement that we're working with UDOT that we want to make sure it gets finalized and signed before we transfer these deeds, but that's kind of a separate issue, so.
They've already acquired that home on the corner.
They did.
Yes, they did. That was Mike Marchbank's uncle and we had some conversations here and that was facilitated. So yeah, that's ready to roll. And you've probably seen the work already happening on demolishing the homes there on the south side. So MAG acquired a lot of those and anyway, it's progressing.
Any other questions on this? Lincoln, you okay?
Good.
Okay.
I move to approve the sixteen hundred North right-of-way property transfers to UDOT as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Stewart, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, that is unanimous and we look forward to this infrastructure coming along for both Orem and Linden.
Thanks.
All right, so next we are on our final item of the agenda. This is a closed session. The city council is going into closed session under state statute for the discussion of potential purchase or sale of real property and pending or possible litigation per Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh five. So thank you for those that have been in attendance and then I would entertain a motion.
Thank you.
So much.
We appreciate you.
You're good at this, Dan.
Okay, Brian, we say all those terms again or because the mayor said that we don't have to, or do we need it in the motion?
If you can put it in the motion.
I will. I make a motion for the city council to go into closed session to discuss the potential purchase or sale of real property and pending or possible litigation per Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh five.
And do we have a second?
Second.
The motion by Councilmember Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Stewart. All in favor? Let's do the roll call.
Cole Hooley, aye?
Yes.
Van Broderick, aye?
Carolyn Lindberg, aye. Well, I guess I don't aye this one, I'm sorry.
Steve Stewart, aye.
Okay, Cole, and Cole and Lincoln.
Lincoln, aye.
All right, we are now in the closed session. We'll go ahead and end the recording and then, Brittany, do you want us to take a quick recess here for a minute? Do you have?
Yeah, the chips is also.
Okay. All right. Cinco de Mayo.
This is not going to be a long session.
Yeah, well.